Okay, we'll call this meeting the order. The Blackout County Board of Supervisors, March 26, 2019. Roll call, please.
Layland.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Chalka.
Here.
White.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Please join us in a moment of silence. Can you join us in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Moving on, item one, agenda received, is proposed or is amended?
Second.
Any questions or comments for the agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Other comments? Anybody like to speak to the board at this time is not a agenda item. Good morning, state your name and address, please.
My name is Aaron Stacy Roberts. I live at 411 Almond Street, Waterloo. And I'm here, I want to address the county on some corruption that has been going on here in the form of obstructing of justice. I came down in 2015 and 16, and this is with the county, case number 15058782. This case was where I was getting text messages that was threatening to walk in my house and put four in your head, nigger, and also other threatening text messages to cut off my granddaughter's head. And this has been going on for about two decades now I've been coming down. Actually, in the earlier stage, I called the sheriff's office to no avail. I didn't get any assistance. I have not been treated equally or fairly in this. There's been no investigations done. I have a case number, but there was no investigation done. And I don't understand why I can come down with legitimate claims. And before I'm assisted, I'm actually, the system has worked against me. And I'm not particularly talking about the sheriff's office now, but I've been to the police with the same complaints, and I ended up in a psychiatric setting behind telling the truth. Back in 1999, this person went in on the restroom on my daughter who was 11 years old. And all this is related back to Waterloo. He stuck his finger in her vagina, case 9914612. Said, "Tell your father he no longer has a half a million dollars, and if you tell your mother, we're gonna kill her." My mother died about 60 days later. I have been trying to get assistance in this matter for about two decades. During this time, whether, I don't know whether you understand what Stockholm syndrome is, and acting under duress. I haven't talked to my daughter in about eight years because of this. We're just starting to get a little contact back. And I have a son that has been forced to be a drug dealer. And I've told your office this seven or eight years ago. And now, all of a sudden, from what I'm understanding, they went up in his house and want to arrest him and make him into a snitch. If we're gonna be some snitching done, I would like for someone to investigate what's going on. And you might find out I'm not homicidal, suicidal, delusional, nor am I gonna run up and shoot up City Hall or this place for that matter. And this did happen. This is not a delusion. Happened in Urbandale, Iowa. It has affected my children for the last 20 years, to where they have been living under Stockholm syndrome and acting out of duress. I've also been to the county attorney's office with these matters. And I'm trying to figure out, why is it that I cannot get any type of an investigation going? My phone number is 319-883-0462. I'm not looking for a response right now, but I would like to hear from someone whoever's in control of this in the next 14 days or so. And I would not like to hear from the sheriff, because I've been contacting him. So if one of you can tell me what we could do, I'll tell you pretty much what it is. When I look at it under US Code 18, there's racketeering going on here, and we probably need to contact, you probably need to contact the Department of Justice in Washington DC. I think it would help our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else? Okay, moving on to item three. This is claims and payments, resolution A. Susan?
The county's expenditures this week total $350,708.11.
Move to approve.
Second.
Anybody have any questions on the resolution? Roll call, please.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
And resolution B.
We don't have any claims this week for Country View. We will have a few next week.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to item four, receiving project updates from department heads and our elected officials. Morning, Kathy.
Morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Inglis, county engineer. I was going to give you a status of our, of the county roads. Can I get the TV screens on, please?
Should be back there behind you.
So just briefly, throughout the county, the gravel roads are still in very poor conditioning, condition. This, these photos were taken yesterday. This is on Simon's Road. The few photos that I do have this morning are from the northwest portion of the county. So Simon's Road is just north of the Cedar Falls city limits. It is one of our busiest gravel roads in the county, so a lot of traffic, traveling on this road yesterday, over the weekend, the rain didn't help matters. So our crews were out there yesterday placing about seven loads of gravel, but it's just making very little impact in the, with the poor subgrade conditions. It's similar to, for example, driving over a waterbed is what this, this particular site was. The trucks just, you can see the earth moving underneath our loaded trucks as they're delivering the rock. So this is now open. We're encouraging people to stay off of it, but just to the east of this is Leversey Road, another busy gravel road, so we don't want that road to be in any worse conditioning either. So we're not closing any gravel roads at this point unless they are in very, very poor condition such as this. This is another photo taken yesterday where a vehicle actually got stuck in the roadway on Leversey Road, again, just north of Cedar Falls city limits. Big Woods Road, this is just south of Cedar Wopsey Road yesterday afternoon. So we are urging residents to drive with caution as they move through these areas. We do need them to dry out a bit more before we are able to place rock. We're hopeful that by next week, more frost will have come out of the subgrade, and in the coming weeks, we should be able to begin placing spot rock throughout the county. Another thing I wanted to mention is, although it does seem a bit early, but our dust control permit, there was a notice in yesterday's newspaper that county residents who typically have dust control placed on their gravel roads, they need to contact their vendor. If a resident is new to the process, they can look on our website for approved vendors and then select one of those vendors. The dust control permits are free. They do have to pay the vendor, of course, for the dust control permit. And we are accepting those applications generally through April 15, although we'll probably take them for longer this year, just because we will be behind, most likely, getting the roads touched up and the rock placed before the vendors are allowed to apply the dust control products. Can I answer any questions about any of the roads right now, or?
Have there been quite a few vehicles, Kathy, that have got stuck, like this picture we saw here?
The sheriff might be able to address that better than myself. For example, in the overnight hours, we don't necessarily hear about all of them, if they're able to get out. There have been several, though, in the past several weeks. There have been numerous.
I wondered if they called your office, or if it was calling the sheriff, or who they contacted.
I think generally they're, they're, they're not generally calling us as their first.
Okay.
You know, they're calling for emergency assistance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, moving on to item five, minutes approved for March 17th and March 21st, 2019.
Second.
Any questions on the minutes? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a consent agenda that's to be made with a single resolution.
So.
Second.
Any questions on the consent? Roll call, please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item seven, reports. This is an update. Ben Deli Gardell doing business, Urban Services, regards to our Washburn Sanitary Sewer. Good morning.
Good morning. Want to apologize for my absence in the last few months. It's been a rather routine few months, so I haven't had too much to speak about, and I've also been busy on the days that you guys meet. So here I am to update for December, January, and February billing of Washburn Sewer System. During all three months, we did routine monitoring, which includes the lagoon cell levels and the flow to the lagoon. During all three months, we submitted the monthly operating report to the DNR as required. In December, we had four service calls and one locate. We did a quarterly influence sample as required in that month. January, we had six service calls and five locates. February, we had three service calls and one locate. The other thing I'd like to update about is that I've been doing the sump pump inspections as I can when I'm there. I haven't followed up on any of those because of the weather. Normally, it had been, you know, 10 degrees out and 20 mile an hour winds, so I haven't organized the locations I want to go to with county, or with the city inspector, but we do need to follow up on those. Just this morning, I did our influence sample, which is required, and then we're gonna be discharging it starting April 15. So we did the pre drawdown water samples for discharging water into the cedar. So did those this morning. Like I said, we'll be starting that April 15. We're gonna invite anyone from the board that would like to come see that process or the lagoon system, or anything in the system for that matter, in person sometime during the discharge, because it's the most interesting time to be out there. Otherwise, it's just two, three ponds sitting there. So not too much to talk about, other than normal maintenance. But that's my update for you guys. Do you have any questions or comments?
Had any problems with pumps with the water?
We did. We haven't had any sump pump problems that I've for sure known about. We did have one earlier in March. I can't remember the exact date. Believe it was two, three weeks ago, where, if you're not familiar with this system, the gravity drains come out of the house and go into the pumps. So between the pumps and the house, normally, the plumbers who had installed that system, they would put a cleanout pipe up to the surface of the, of the ground. So we had a pump that was, water was rushing in. I thought it was a sump pump, but it was constant. It was just a rush of water, and it would probably fill up a five gallon bucket in about five seconds. So it was heavy water coming in. So I did some, the inspections of both houses, neither of them had a sump pump in it. So come to find out, about an hour and a half later of just trying to figure out what was going on, a cleanout had been mowed over, broke the top off of it. So it was right between the two houses of the grading, so all the snow and ice was actually covering that up. Wasn't visible. We had to get to it and plug that. So it's still plugged. I've talked to the homeowner about getting his own plug for it, so I can get my plug back. But other than, you know, a $5 PVC plug, it's taken care of for the time being. So that's something that we've, I've never run into that before. So something new every day, right? And that's another thing we'll be looking for when we do have an issue that we can't figure out. But another possibility would have been, the only thing we could think of was an underground pipe that had been broken from just age or water pressure. But it was a lot of water coming in there, so. Other than that, we haven't had too many other sump pump, bad, bad issues.
Okay. Board, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item eight. Resolution of the contract between Blackout County and Aspro, Waterloo, Iowa. Letting up was held February the 19th, 2019, at 10:00 AM for the project. Looks like Raymond Road, north of Indian Road Creek. And Kathy, you just want to talk about what this is. Looks like it's gonna cover a little bit.
Sure. So this was let by the DOT. We are receiving some federal money to pay for our, to pay our share. I've told you several weeks ago that we're also in a partnership with Iowa DOT at this over, this interchange at the overpass structures. They would like to rebuild, reconstruct a portion of their ramps, all four of their ramps, so we're gonna work with them. It's all in the same contract. The construction will be this summer, and Aspro will be the main, the prime contractor. And I'd just like you to approve the contracts, so then we can have our, begin talking with Aspro to find out their schedule. And we'll be keeping you informed of that.
Okay, Board, any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Okay, roll call, please.
Chalka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Item B is a resolution, lowest reasonable bid received from Blacktop Service Company, Humboldt, Iowa, for Fisco 20 seal coat various locations of Blackout County, a bid of $165,821.50. And the engineer's estimate was $178,500. Kathy?
So I believe these were open last week in my absence here in the boardroom, and we would, I recommend that you accept the bid from Blacktop Services. They did the seal coating last year, and it looks like they've done a nice job. The product is, seems to be a good quality product. So I would, I recommend that you approve or accept this award, and we'd be allowed to pursue the contract with them.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item C, a resolution of the lowest reasonable bid from Kluzner Construction, Farley, Iowa, for FY '20 crack sealing, various locations of Blackout County. The bid was for $39,613.80. Engineer's estimate was $34,812. A little higher.
So this was an informal bid process due to it being under $100,000. We did solicit several vendors. We received bids from four different companies, vendors, and Kluzner was the lowest. They are also going to be doing some crack sealing for Rory over at Pinecrest in the upper parking lot as well. So that's a good partnership between the two departments here. So I would recommend that you accept this bid from Kluzner Construction, and we go ahead and work our way towards getting the contract signed.
Second.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Item nine is other business. This is a motion at the reappointment of Steven, Steve Russkern, his representative for the sheriff in Blackout County Compensation Board, be approved, effective July 1st, 2019.
So.
Second. Any questions? I believe the Board still has one more opening for the supervisors. It might be Mr. Chalka might have to pick somebody. So anyway, any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item B is a resolution of taxes due and payable submitted persons, as indicated, including special assessments. This is in accordance with Iowa Code 427.9.
So.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Item C is discussion, possible board action, funding options for the 4.1 million Cedar Wopsey Bridge project. Susan?
So the last time we talked about this, after the bids were received, and the, the total amount was only a little over 4 million, instead of what we had previously thought was gonna be six or seven. I talked with the engineer's office, and we were looking at having them use just a million dollars of their, or approximately a million in federal funds, a million in local funds, and then 2 million that originally we thought we would have to bond for. But our last discussion that we had, we talked about using the 2 million that we had included in this current year budget for Country View, because we do not need that. We had talked about using that 2 million for the Cedar Wopsey project. So the engineer's office, in the next item on the agenda, they need to update their five-year program, and they need to know how this bridge is going to be funded, so that they can put that in their program. And so we just need to determine if that's what the Board wants to do.
When you say 1 million local, what do you mean local?
So.
Secondary roads, and then 1 million, what?
Federal Ridge Fund.
Has this deviated from the original options that you showed the Board earlier on the different funding?
There was a variety of funding options depending on the projects. Obviously, initially, through the planning phase, we kind of figured the project would be closer to 7.3 million. As part of that, when we went into that planning process, that was, you know, including 4 million from bonding, we were gonna use about 2.5 million from our federal aid, and the remaining 800,000 would be from our secondary road account. So with obviously the funding being less, we were just looking to try and find ways to adjust some of that funding.
And then the 2 million from Country View, and how much from Country View? What was the total amount that we received?
No, this isn't from the sale. This is, we had included 2 million in the FY '19 budget for Country View, because if we were going to continue with Country View, we would need to support.
And we haven't used any of that 2 million in FY '19?
Right. We advanced them 500,000, I believe, in the fall, but I repaid that when we did the sale. So we haven't used any of the 2 million that was budgeted. And so we could put that in the CIP Roads and Bridges Fund for the Cedar Wopsey Bridge and use it towards that project. Otherwise, it would just end up, you know, going into our general fund reserves, which I know that you're, you know, looking to spend down. So that seems like a good, logical choice to use those funds for this project, but that's what we're.
I thought during budget discussions, we had kind of consensus around this plan. And so I'll offer a resolution to use the 1 million dollars local, or the approximately 1 million dollars local, approximately 1 million in federal funds, and then the other 2 million dollars in the tax where we're on spent money for Country View.
I'll second it.
I think this makes sense. I mean, the area is, I probably won't support it for the mere fact that I'm still opposed to the extra money that we're spending for the bridge staying up while the other ones being built. But other than that, if we have to go for it, these look reasonable ways to do it. At least you're not bonding and taxing and so forth. But other than that, I probably won't support it. Is anybody else?
It's a good use, I think, and keeps us from bonding, that's for certain. And that was something we looked at as a goal, too, so thank you.
Do we have a motion?
So is the cost scale the same for the reroute, you know, the change in route?
You know, it's really hard to say, once we go into bidding. Obviously, the numbers we had from a planning level study, you know, 7.3 million or somewhere in the 6 million range, you know, it's gonna vary from planning study to actual bids. And at this point, without, you know, redesigning the project, re-letting the project, you really won't know a true number. I mean, I think we got very good bids on the option that, that we did proceed with letting. And I think it's a very good route to move forward with.
Okay, is there any other questions from the Board? Okay, we do have a motion, a second, and we'll have a roll call on this.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
No.
Okay, then, moving on to item D. This is discussion, possible board action amendment, number one to the Blackout County Secondary Roads, 2019, five-year program be approved and direct the chair to sign for. Ryan?
So this is just adjusting our five-year plan. One project is the Cedar Wopsey Bridge Project. Again, we're making an adjustment in our local, our federal aid funds. As part of the five-year plan, the funds coming from what would have been spent on Country View or at the general fund are just gonna show up as local funds in how we put it in our program. So it's gonna show up as about $3.1 million of local and 1 million of federal aid. Any additionals in the project, change orders, things that come up along the way, will just end up coming out of our secondary roads account for that project. The other project is Cedar Wopsey Road paving that will be, that was just let this last month. We'll be starting with contracts here soon on that next. That is from Highway 218 over to Highway 63. As part of that project, we did receive some safety funding grants through the DOT of $286,000. That is paying for us to widen the road and add some, you know, I believe it's two-foot paved shoulders, some rumble strips, and then larger pavement markings on there, just for safety improvements to that route. So this is just showing that adjustment of the additional safety funds. It's kind of just cleaning up our five-year plan before we proceed into the next planning phase.
Okay. Motion to approve.
A second.
Any other questions, comments, Board? Roll call, please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item E. This is discussion, possible board action erect the sculpture outside the courthouse in honor of men and women of Blackout County who helped pass the 19th Amendment, allowing all citizens the right to vote, no matter their sex requested by Waterloo. 19th Amendment, Centennial Committee. Okay, we had the discussion on this last week, and Dana, you got a little information from our insurance company?
I do. I spoke to Janet Duful from PDCM. She sent me over a quote for erecting the sculpture outside, and the additional annual premium would be $19 a year. We do have a coverage limit of 15,000 with a $1,000 deductible if it were damaged and if we wanted to replace it. Otherwise, it would just cost the county an additional $19.
Okay, Board, was there anything else? I think there wasn't any other questions, was there? So is the Board ready to?
Yes.
We still have to have a fundraiser on this, is that correct? So timeframe you're looking at, what?
I guess August of 20?
Yeah. Installing it or?
Rory, what do you have?
If I could, I just had one comment on that. Rory Givens, Maintenance Superintendent. If the Board does choose to move forward with this, I would like to see a detailed site plan of the sculpture, and particularly the base, the footing, with regards to that, so.
That'll be part of the motion, we'll put it in the minutes.
Thank you.
Sure, come up, please. Name and address.
Maureen, excuse me, Maureen White, 2303 Greenwood Avenue, Cedar Falls. Just a correction on the motion. It should be Cedar Falls, Waterloo, 19th Amendment Committee.
Okay. Okay, Board, is there anything else? I don't believe there was any other questions last week, was there? Okay. Roll call, please.
Do we have a motion? Second. Excuse me. White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for putting your time in there. Okay, moving on to item F, resolution opposed, Senate Study Bill 1045, Senate File 184, passed by the Senate Committee on Transportation, be approved. Kathy?
Yeah, so the, these two bills are winding their way to the Iowa State Legislature. Yeah, so the, these two bills are winding their way through the Iowa State Legislature. And the bills essentially allow wood products to be moved on Iowa roads. And those wood products could be allowed, they'd be allowed to carry 130 pounds, 130,000 pounds. So they would be over legal weight limits. The bill further states that the DOT has the authority to issue the permit for these overweight vehicles on all state routes, on all city routes, and all county routes. So of course, myself, the Iowa County Engineers Association, we have some concerns about these overweight vehicles being allowed to travel over our bridges. And we potentially would not even know about this. So the way weight limits are assigned is we, you know, we post our bridges for, for a bridge that cannot handle illegal load, 80,000 pounds, just in general. There are some complexities with determining loads that, all those bridges that are not, that do allow over 100, over 80,000 pounds, excuse me, does not mean that they can carry an infinite number of loads or an infinite amount of weight. We have not analyzed them for really much of anything other than the 80,000 pounds. So we don't know which of our bridges, even though they're not posted, would be able to carry 130,000 pounds. We would have to do an analysis on each individual bridge, most likely. So I oppose this because, like I said, we don't know, we wouldn't know where these vehicles are going and which bridges they would be traveling over. I am urging you to pass this resolution to say that you are not in support of this as well. We're fearful that if this did pass, it would possibly be expanded to include other types of products that would be allowed to just go over our bridges. We're, we're concerned that there would be bridge collapses if this bill were to pass.
What, wood products?
The bill just says wood products.
Toothpicks.
Raw wood products come out of timbered areas in the state.
But if our bridges are posted, then they still have to abide by that.
Yes, absolutely.
You're saying the bridges that we don't have posted.
Right. We haven't analyzed them for any type of, these, these types of loads at all.
Well, the process that's in place now when we have overweight vehicles that use this, what, that's different from this.
Right. So the process we have in place now is every city and county has their own jurisdiction to regulate what travels over their own bridges. A wood product mover would have to call us and apply for a permit.
So you'd be aware of it.
We would be aware of it, yes. We can tell them to take a different route if a certain bridge didn't work.
But. Currently, the ways the laws are written now, their loads actually wouldn't even be allowed to apply for an overweight permit because they can divide it into smaller loads that would be overweight.
See, it's just unfortunate that those in control of our legislature right now have exchanged common sense and local control for favors for the political action committees that fund their reelection. And that's exactly what this kind of bill is about.
Yeah, I would agree with that. But I said it's unfortunate that I said we have home rule for a reason and that's because the counties are responsible for their bridges, their roads, and are the best to evaluate those and they're trying to take that away from us, I guess. So I appreciate the fact that you even brought this to the board, this resolution. So thank you.
Okay, board, anything else? Questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
White.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chelka.
Yes.
Little.
Yes. Okay, item G, discussion establishing a process procedure for outside agencies submitting annual funding requests for the board of supervisors.
I brought this forward because it was brought up during budget discussions and I thought now would be a good time to, if we're going to change the process or procedure, there's philosophy on it all across the board, it sounds like. So I thought it'd be a good time, well, things are slow now and before we get into the next budget cycle in the not-too-distant future, we'd have a procedure established so we could get a leg up on this. I know some members or member wants to do away completely with it. I'm not in that camp. I just.
Well, we have no process right now.
Right.
Last process was with solid waste and that funding was different money. It wasn't taxpayers' money. It came from user fees at the solid waste plan. And it was like a rebate that they were giving back to the cities and the county and that money ran out. So it was divvied up. There was some restrictions, I know, on the solid waste money. One of them, none of the money can be for salaries.
There's no way to know that either.
And then it got to a point too that I saw over the years that if they received it, they kind of thought it was automatic for next year and quit showing up and so forth, so.
Based on the comments of the board, I'm willing to spearhead this and see what we come up with to bring back for the whole board to consider.
I think that we've got, I mean, there's some pretty good examples already out there between Lynn County and Johns County that both have online applications. And I looked through them and it looked, I know a lot of us up here have experienced doing grant writing and it seemed pretty standard kind of questions that you ask that aren't too long of answers. So it's not too much work for us to sort through, but really gets to the point of what they're going to use the money for. And yeah, I think the only question I saw kind of missing, I know we like to hear from, is agencies that work in multiple counties. We like to know what other counties are also doing. And we, that's a question that we typically ask. And so I think both of those formats looked like a pretty good start for us to look at with the addition of that one question.
And we have for probably the last five years not had the solid waste funding. So we have been using some of county funds.
Yeah, we've been sparingly, but really what, what, my criteria is basically is what the budget shakes out to first. I mean, obviously, if you're going to have a tax increase, yet you're doling out X amount of dollars, that makes no sense to me whatsoever. So you can have a process in place if and when we decide to go through the agencies. I don't think we should ever be stuck with a set about of number of how many we fund or dollar amount. As a matter of fact, we don't know where we're at until we actually go through the budget. To have some kind of a process down probably is a good idea. But it's also important to let them know that it's not automatic every year. I mean, there's a lot of factors.
Maybe as we work through that process, like I said, because we're going to, if we do decide to do it, we would want to set an amount so that people, we know how many dollars.
Yeah, obviously, we are in a position this year, but there could be years that, you know, it's going to be a lot leaner and it makes no sense. And so anyway, we've got plenty of time then, so you're going to work on that.
Yes. I think a hard, fast deadline for submission is important.
Yep, yeah. And then we had a committee appointed by the board on the solid waste, but I think it needs to stay with the board.
I agree.
Because we're dealing with the money, different monies now.
I agree.
We dissolve that committee.
That gives me direction and things to run with.
You'll have it tomorrow then, huh?
Yeah. Short timeline.
Okay, is there anything else on that subject? Okay, that takes us down to any reports or information from the board?
Well, I know the Honor Flights fundraiser is coming up, April 13th.
April 13.
Tickets are selling fast.
Tables are sold out. Tables are, or tables are sold out, but we still have booths available. And that's room for up to four people, so it'd be $100 a booth. And a lot of good entertainment. We've got some new entertainment this year that's really going to be good. It's going to be an outstanding show. And it's, it's been supported well by the community. So I would just hopefully, well, we've had over 400 and some tickets sold already. Four, I think as Frank said the other day, 450 tickets sold. So we're well on our way. We had the discussion Sunday on what we were going to eat and stuff. And there was some widespread discussion, but hopefully we've settled on, on choice of meals. As I said, it's like the military, you just, sometimes you don't get a choice.
Okay, is there anybody else on the board?
I just mentioned the 4H, their annual omelette fair or omelette breakfast fundraiser is this Sunday. I think from 8 o'clock to 11 at the UAW Hall. And if you're lucky enough, I'll be one of the celebrity omelette chefs. So if you want a good one, get in my, get in my line.
I think we've all been out there one time together over the years.
And just one other thing, send out our condolences to the Richmond family buddy of mine. He lost his mother the other day and he's had a rough year. He lost his wife and his stepfather and mother within a week of one another.
Anybody else got anything? That, is that a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, we are adjourned.